Joyce, you take your time.
The legions of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence for the victim of the bullet from Texas.
Dear Governor, please watch over all of our county employees and all of our hair blocking, allowing some consumers of money that's been brought to us today.
Good morning. Now that I have the gentleman in charge telling me what to do, we'll get along just fine. I would like to remind everybody that this month, we are live on YouTube, and so in order to make ourselves known, we'll need to introduce ourselves when we come to the mic, and so you can just tell your name and where, what you represent. We're going to go around, we're going to do it once for the people at the table here. So Brett, we'll start with you, just name and your council member.
Brett Hating, Councilman for Walnut and Clark area.
Matt Nelson, District Two, so southwest Montgomery County.
Mike Warren, at large.
Gary Booth, Councilman at Large.
Joyce Grimble, District One.
Dan Taylor, the Council Attorney.
Tom Klein, County Administrator.
Mindy Byers, County Auditor.
Okay, thank you all. On the agenda, we have the consent agenda, we have the minutes, the series transfers, and the cash balance report. Do I have a motion to accept that agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Are there any public comments on the agenda items to be discussed today? If not, we'll move right on into money matters. Excuse me. Our first one up is Ms. Andrea.
Good morning. Andrea Geigel, Chief Probation Officer from Montgomery County. I have two new grants coming up. So the first line is in regards to the local coordinating council. It's an ongoing grant we ask for each year. There are many grants thrown in there, and this is money that the county receives based on fines and fees that are paid associated with drug-related arrests. And so that money for that. And then the second is a new grant. It's the Juvenile Incentives and Treatment Grant, and that is awarded through the community foundation, and it's likely going to be a one-time grant from that standpoint, but we're going to be able to get two additional individuals trained in the Prime for Life program. That's a drug and alcohol education program. It's going to be offered specifically for juveniles. We currently offer it for adults and seventeen-year-old juveniles. And then also in regards to the moral recognition therapy, we're going to be able to train one new facilitator for that program that we currently offer.
So that takes care of all of them that you have listed here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Are there any questions for Andrea?
Correct.
So exactly what are we doing? I mean, it says that there's, I'm thinking, we take grant money coming in, and we're going to put it into a fund. We approve that. But the fund's to be determined? So is, what's the...
I don't believe that this went through, that it was, it hasn't been assigned yet.
So we're not, we've just proven accepting the funds?
Yes.
Just remember appropriation is authority to spend money, so when the probation department receives a grant, they apply for a grant, they receive a grant, they notify the commissioners, the commissioners create a fund, but the money has not been appropriated by you yet. It was not part of your budget because it hadn't been received. And so when grants come in, you're required to appropriate it so that the money can be spent. An appropriation is merely authority to spend money. So she has the money now, but it was not in the 2025 budget, so it has to be placed in the budget so that she can spend it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the grant money for the probation department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you. Do you want to say something, Brian, about this public defender one?
Morning. I'm Brian Donaldson, the Chief Public Defender, Montgomery County. Yeah, what we're doing there is a little misleading. We're not going to pay the intern $73,000. That money's already been appropriated. It's in the supplemental public defender fund, and the state's indicated to us that we need to move that from the supplemental fund into the general fund like we've talked about. So the money's already there, and if you look later on in the agenda, there's a request to move it out of that fund. So we're moving it from, just moving it from supplemental to the general, and we're going to pay the intern out of that. And then also, I have hired, filled my fourth full-time position, so the remainder of the year will be, her salary will be paid out of that line item also then.
Any questions for Brian?
You were making contracts, and now you're going to have four defenders.
We'll have, at the end of the month, have four full-time. We still have some contracts, too.
Right. That's what I was wondering, is that going to, is there enough funding to do all that?
Right now, there is, yes.
Okay.
And I, but we got to increase that for next, next year's budget.
But later on in the year, you'll be okay also.
Right.
Okay.
Just to be clear on, on what Brian's doing, we're doing a reduction in his supplemental fund, and then we're doing an appropriation into the general fund. It's not really transferring because you can't transfer between funds. So just to have a full picture of what's going on there. The other thing, Brian, did you just say you're going to pay a full-time employee out of that line as well?
That's my hope, yes.
Okay, we need two lines.
Two lines.
One for each of, so we'll be transferring some of that at the next meeting.
Move some of that money into the next.
Yep.
In a different line. That's whatever we need to do to get them both paid. Because the intern, our intern ends in a month, so we only need to pay him for another month out of that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the intern move of money for, or the public defender money. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carrying.
Thank you.
Sondra.
Good morning. Sandra Sixberry, County Clerk. And today, I'm just asking us to, if we can move some of the money out of the perpetuation fund to fund the part-time scanner that you guys were so graciously approved in April. That's all I need for the moment.
That's right. We did approve that. Mm-hmm. It's been moved and seconded that we appropriate the 20,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carrying. Thank you. Thank you.
Morning. Sherry Bentley, Montgomery County Assessor. I'm here this morning. We approved later in the year after budgets were approved for 25, some additional services on my Eagle View contract, so I need the additional funds to pay for my portion of the bill this year. We split that bill between all the offices that use it, and the city pays a portion, but I, because I wanted those additional services, I'm paying for that out of my, the additional, out of my sales disclosure fund.
And what exactly does that do?
Those are our aerials, where they fly over the county. And we, there are different levels of resolution that you can get, and so we wanted an additional, we wanted better resolution so we can do more desktop assessing. You can get much clearer. And oblique photography is where you can kind of see down the side of the structure, so we can do more from our desk and less from the field. It's very, very helpful, so going forward.
Technology's great.
It is. It is, when it works.
Any questions? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the assessors ask. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to try to give you the short version on this. In theory, I need $3,800. Part of this was when Sergeant Jenkins retired, and now we have Captain Hughes retiring next Wednesday. So we began the promotional process last fall for two sergeants and one captain. Those take months to do. Those positions have been filled. We started both sergeants in January, so they've been supervising since January. When Captain Hughes retires next week, Sergeant Watson will become the new captain. And there are several transfers, there's four on the next page. Some of that, a lot of that money was made up when Sergeant Jenkins retired. He was a twenty-five-year supervisor. We hired a brand-new guy, so we, we had a lot of money left over to fill those first sergeant's positions, and a lot of Captain Watson's pay. But we're going to be $3,800 short. It's either that or have Jake wait like two more months to begin captain duties, which isn't like super practical for us. So I would like to ask for that additional money so we can start him immediately upon Captain Hughes' retirement.
Questions? Sounds like a safety issue. We don't want to leave that position empty, right?
It's a, it's an administrative, it's a heavy administrative issue. That certainly could be a safety issue. I don't want to paint the wrong picture administratively. You know, Captain Hughes is in charge of all, all of patrol. Sergeant Watson's going to assume control of, so it certainly could be. But certainly from the administrative side, it is a very valuable position.
I'm feeling very old this morning because Captain Hughes was in my class at North Montgomery. He graduated in 1994, so...
We are feeling old this morning, so I'll, I'll jump in there with you.
Yeah, he was a great kid. I'm sure he's still...
I remember starting with, with Captain Hughes back in the jail several...
Yeah, you're about the same age, aren't you? Yeah. Questions?
So you're just, you're starting into a several retirees? Is this it for the year?
This will be it for the year. There's no other additional, I mean, the next retirement on the horizon is me. We, we had two, we had two sergeants that, that could go. When we had all this movement with, with the promotions, both notch sergeants came to days. I didn't foresee that happening.
So we're going to be in pretty good shape?
I think, yeah, we should be in pretty good shape. They, they both enjoy days, and it's given them certainly a new outlook on the clientele that they deal with.
That took some pressure off.
Yeah. And I think they're going to be around me more, so I think that just...
Good thing or bad thing?
If they're staying, I'm going to say it's a good thing, so...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the money for the captain's position at the sheriff's department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Health Department.
Adrienne Northcutt, Administrator for the Health Department. This is the annual grant process on the opioid restricted fund. It's evenly divided into four categories. It's something that the commissioners have already approved. And then on the restricted, that's going to help with, or sorry, the unrestricted, unrestricted is going to help with the coordinator salary for Montgomery, drug-free Montgomery County, and then the grant match from the commissioners.
Questions?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded that all of the Health Department requests be passed. All those in favor, signify by saying, by saying aye. Opposed, the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jessica Burgett, EMA Director. This first for vehicle, that would be, we've been in talks for probably six months with my advisory council, speaking with other departments on how they handle a new vehicle purchase, and most of the county goes with Enterprise Fleet Services, and so that's what we're looking to do. We're looking to replace our Dodge truck. It's a 2014. It's the vehicle we used to pull all of our trailers with, and it's on its last leg. So working with Enterprise, we worked out a lease with them. They also are giving us a little over $6,000 for the Dodge truck. And this would include, so this is six months. This is the, and I don't know that, we won't have to start paying for a few months, but I just went ahead and did six months. So this won't all probably be used this year. So it's, it's a little over $12,000 a year for that vehicle.
So you're leasing?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a sixty-month lease. Sixty.
Sixty months.
Sixty months.
Questions?
There is not. We did double-check because we will be adding lights and things, and there is nothing that will hurt us by doing that. They're actually, they have a company they work with that, that they'll do it right there on site, so it's, it's convenient as well.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there any maintenance or anything that's going to be on top of this?
What, we got to have a second before you can ask a question? Okay, thank you. Now go.
Is there any maintenance on top of this?
Not on top of it. It's included with it.
And insurance?
That is paid for by the county.
Okay.
Comes out of the commissioner's budget, I assume.
Okay, they're nodding, yes.
And that wouldn't be any different than the previous vehicle?
Correct.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any other questions? All those in favor of the EMS request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carrying. Thank you.
Thank you. My next one, the remainder, I'm not asking for any additional money. So the next one, we had a message board that was damaged in one of the storms. It was out, placed for one of the races, and a windstorm came through and completely destroyed it. And so we received an insurance check for this. So it's just replacing that message board, but we've, we've received the funds for it already for insurance.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the 15,000 request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carrying. Thank you.
Yep. The next two are together. So we have LEPC, which is Local Emergency Planning Committee, and that kind of handles our hazmat, our ESF, EHS for industries. So those industries that have a lot of hazmat-related things have to send in documents with the state, and so we maintain all of that. We, we meet quarterly with these meetings and just make sure kind of everyone's doing what they're supposed to be hazmat-wise when it comes to industry. So with that, we receive a percentage of those fees. So every year, the Department of Revenue sends us a check, and that's what this is. So we've already received the funds. We're just appropriating it down to the line items.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All those in favor of that distribution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Now we have transfer of appropriations. Sondra?
So on this one, similar thing as with a part-time scanner, but we took a full-time position and split it into two part-time positions, and I just need to transfer the money into the new light items from the previous line item.
Questions?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the clerk can move those two funds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Nancy Cox County Recorder. I'm just asking for the transfer of funds. We reduced what was approved for the budget, but we reduced it for publication, so I just need to transfer it back over.
It's been moved and seconded that we transfer the request of $5,000. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good morning. I'll answer any questions. I tried to explain the additional and transfer all in one, but that's what the transfers are for. They're for the new promotions. And then we had one that, as we were doing this year's budget, we found out he was a year behind on, on the matrix of where he should have been. And we were able to do, do all of that through, through Sergeant Jenkins' retirement and then hiring the, the new guy. So that's what those are.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the sheriff's request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Thank you.
Motion carrying. Do you have any other questions about the reduction of appropriations, since Brian already talked about the public defender, this item? It's been moved and seconded that we approve that appropriation. All, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion carrying. All right. Dan?
Yes, you have before you ordinance, 2025-1, which is an ordinance which would amend the wheel and surtax. The version you have in front of you shows the changes. If you look on page two, the changes would increase the motor vehicle excise surtax from $40 per vehicle to $50, which is the maximum. And then on the wheel tax, on the next page, it would increase the wheel tax from $60 to $80, which is also the maximum. I'll be happy to answer any, oh, and, and this change, if, if adopted, would take place actually under the rules on January 1 of 2026.
Jake, do you have anything you'd like to add? What this extra money's going to be used for?
Good morning. Jake Low, Highway Director. Yeah, so you know, we've seen the plan a few times. This would be allocated towards chip seal, crack seal, cold mix paving, and hauling rock to gravel roads. Those are the places that we struggle anyway, so that would just be helping extend those services.
And we'd still be in a deficit for what you need, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Jake or Mr. Taylor? Yeah?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we change, we accept the ordinance that changes the wheel tax for the county. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
You guys will see that in the 2026 budget, I created a line that's under by two minutes slash material. So that's what that would go for. It'd be a 2000 series in 2026, 1176 MVH budget.
The next item under old business is funding for the public defender's office. The study committee has met repeatedly, and we have formed a suggestion that we're going to present to the council next month. We believe that we should go with the program. We just had a couple other questions come up that we need to address before we vote on that. So we will do that before the next meeting, and then we will present that to you, what our recommendation is. Are there any questions that you have? No. Okay. Alex, did you have something you wanted to add? This is Alex Thomas. I'll let her introduce herself.
Thank you. Alex Thomas, President of the Board of Public Defenders. I just wanted to add that the board had conversation with the State Director of the Public Defender Commission, and he informed us that if the county council approves this proposal for the reimbursement program, that depending on the month that they approve it, if it was this month, which that's not going to happen, but August, and the board, the public defender board gets their comprehensive plan done, which outlines all of the positions and the plan for case levels, that kind of thing. If we get our plan done and approved by the state commission by December, they will go back retroactive and reimburse the county as if the county had entered the program in August. So you'll be able to recoup that forty percent, well, you'll start your reimbursement program in August, which is really beneficial if we can get it on the ground. And that's, of course, so the public defender's office would have to meet the standards that are outlined in that public defender reimbursement program, you know, the county level, the levels, their quality of service, that kind of thing. And then if all goes well, and the, this comprehensive plan is approved in December, we can go retroactive. Because they meet in, I think, January 2nd. Their commission meets in January, and they can approve it as long as we get it in by December.
You can have your paper, it's really your paperwork that has to be done.
Right. Like, so if you voted on it in August, then it, then it's on the public defender board, county board, to prepare the comprehensive plan. They prepared us, or they've sent us the, like, the sample documents. They have an attorney who is assigned to help guide the board as we put together the document, and then that's submitted to them for their review and approval. And then once they approve that, and they, you enter the commission, then they'll go retroactive to August, as if you entered into the program August.
Well, that, I thought when we met, now tell me if I'm wrong, which you will.
Was that...
We were under the assumption, the committee working on this... We were under the assumption, the committee working on this, that it was done quarterly. So, we would only, if we entered into it in August,
Oh.
we would only be paid for October, November, December, the last quarter.
You might be right about that. Because I think the assumption, when we talked to Mr. Mason, it was right after your committee had met, and we had a number of questions to the State Commission. And you may be right. I think we were the assumption it would be voted on in July. So, you might be right. I'll have to clarify that, but you might be right.
Okay.
It might be quarterly. It may go back to October. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we could...
Yeah, you're right. No, you're right.
We could at least capture three months, yeah.
Yes. Right, okay.
Okay.
So, just to be aware of that when you're voting in August.
But even, if we do, if we pass it, you have until the end of the year to submit your paperwork?
We have until the end of the year for the next State Commission meeting.
Okay.
So, that they can approve it. Because they only meet, they meet quarterly also.
I see, okay. All right.
So, I'm sorry about the quarterly, you're right. I think it's like the first part of January, I'll have to double check.
So, in the event we decide to go this route, as the Advisory Board, they, okay, was stepping up to do the additional work that's going to be asked of them. And we were asking for reviews and maybe some information that way annually.
You mean the Public Defender Board?
Yes.
Would we be prepared to do all the work for that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I think what Gary's asking is, when we've talked about it, we've learned that the Public Defender Board doesn't do an annual evaluation of the department. And that's what we would ask of you if we approved this. So, are you willing, would you be willing to do?
We did talk that over with Mr. Mason because we weren't sure. So, the Public Defender Chief, he's an appointee of the board.
Right.
So, my understanding, there is no provision for evaluating the Public Defender Chief. The chief does evaluate his personnel, and that's part of the comprehensive plan. Now, that being said, you know, the board has discussed and will discuss parameters about the chief's appointment, like what we, what we would like to see in the chief, if that's kind of something within what you're talking about, to make sure that, I mean, it's our duty to make sure he's doing his job, number one, to make sure that he's going to meet the standards that the comprehensive plan is going to require. He has to meet the, he or she, he has to meet the case level requirements and the quality of service requirements to make sure, you know, that they're adequately and appropriately representing their clients, managing his office. So, I think that's, we would do that as, like, not like a job description so much, but as an expectation. Does that sound right?
But that's what we were looking for.
Okay.
I'm glad you shared that.
Okay, so it's something in writing is what you're looking for? Are you, are you okay with the board? Because according to the State Commission, it's more, it's more, we don't do the evaluation. We monitor his, his performance as a, as a board, but, you know, knowing what standards he would have to meet under the comprehensive plan.
So, then, does your board have to report that to anybody after you've done that exercise?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
No, but we're welcome to take input.
I think the council would like a report saying that, you know, we're doing the job, doing what we're supposed to be doing, meeting the standards and those kinds of things.
Sure.
And I hope we could get something like that annually.
Okay, that could probably, I mean, I could look in the plan, it'd be part of the comprehensive plan is what, is what you're talking about. I'm sure we can incorporate it in a manner that would meet the state law, which is the appointment law, as well as your concerns to make sure he's accountable to the public for his job performance. Is that what you're looking for?
And in no way do we think Brian's not doing his job. That is not the point here. No.
No, but I understand.
You're doing a great job, Brian. But, you know, going forward, you know, this is, since we're entering into this new project, a reimbursement program, we just wondered if we needed to be a little more transparent about what our money's being spent on and how that's working.
Sure. I understand that. We'll incorporate that. We had planned to meet after the council's meeting, once the council approves the, entering into the program. We were planning to meet and how would we go forward with that, with your... We had talked about the committee's concerns about that and how to address that, and we're still kind of talking how we're going to do that.
Right. That works. Any other questions?
Well, and we have job descriptions, and Tom can get you one that we have for, and you could see how it matches up with what your expectations are.
You mean on the chief?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't find the ordinance. I looked in the ordinance and I've looked in resolutions. I couldn't find how far back it went to the original appointment for the board and the original appointment of Brian as the chief public defender. So, I couldn't find it.
And Tom, you can get, you could get her a copy of his, can't you?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
It's when they did the salary schedule, the study last year that...
Right.
And it may mirror, it'd be something that might help you out.
I got you. Okay. All right. Yeah, we'll entertain that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Alex. We appreciate the explanation.
Just one comment, for you guys' benefit. We've met several times. The judges have been really helpful in this process. Brian's, he's done a lot of work in this thing. And we kind of know stone unturned is what we're going through. And we've got a couple of other questions or comments that we need to review before we make a recommendation. It's been a big process.
Right. And, you know, we appreciate it, appreciate you guys working on that, everybody. And also, if it can bring money back to the county, if we can save money, I don't know before, years ago when they did this, I don't believe it was the case. And, but now, if there's a way we can get money back, and if we're where we need to be on staffing, then it's kind of a no-brainer. So, appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Moving on, the AWL request.
Good morning. I'm Kurt Holman, representing the Animal Welfare League of Montgomery County. We're seeking a, an allocation of two thousand five hundred dollars from the County Dog Tax Fund. My information, end of June, was that the fund consisted of three thousand six oh nine seventy, so we're seeking a good part of that. So, that is our request today.
Well, I'll make a motion that...
Wait a minute. Mindy has something.
Brian and I, Brian, Kurt, I'm sorry, Brian. Sorry, Kurt.
Kurt, you're doing a great job too.
Yeah. Kurt and I usually speak a couple of times a year about this, and he did call, and he always makes sure that we have enough in the fund. Our collections were really low this year, but that leaves us a little over a thousand dollars in that fund, and hopefully, that should be sufficient.
And I've been down to the Animal Welfare League a couple of times and been through, and they have a lot of, a lot of animals and not much space. And they have a much need there. The one thing that we need to make sure, and I'm glad that there's money left, is that dog taxes for if something, somebody's farm animals are attacked by dogs or something, then they get reimbursed. And it's, I don't know that we have as much of it as they used to, but there's still times that there's people that get animals destroyed by something. So, I'll make a motion that we accept.
It's been moved and seconded that we present the, or that we give the twenty-five hundred dollar allocation from the County Dog Tax Fund to the AWL. All those in favor? Opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Just to heads up, this came in after it was time to send appropriations, so the appropriation will be at the next meeting as well as the claim.
Okay, thank you. Andrea?
Good morning. So, back in April, I let you guys know that we were, our Assistant Chief was retiring come October third. Mark Bickel's been with us for, he's been with the county for over thirty-five years. So, he's served in a couple of different departments. Ultimately, though, we know who we are hiring. She's accepted the position for the Assistant Chief position. But what happened, surprise to us, is that in May, we lost an employee. So, we've been operating a man-down. A man-down shouldn't be too significant, but we aren't having any luck with any new hires. So, we, because of that and adjusting caseloads, we have changed things. And Lindsay Vialpando has already accepted and has started doing Assistant Chief work. Mark Bickel is taking time off as he's preparing for his departure. In addition to that, he is covering that caseload that we've lost in regards to that. So, we've just shifted what we had originally planned to do. So, what we're asking to do is to go ahead and start paying Lindsay Vialpando the Assistant Chief pay because she's doing the work. That number is approximately twenty-four hundred dollars. We're not asking for any additional money. With Mark's retirement, we will be, in fact, returning some money at the end of the year. So, it's no additional money requested. The concern comes to be simply that it's not a normal practice to start paying before the other person has retired. In this situation, I'm asking for that. And we have taken this request to the judges, my direct bosses, and they have approved it in regards to that. So, now, we come before you for this.
So, she's not getting the pay yet?
Correct.
You're coming to her... Okay, okay.
Correct.
So, when are you asking the pay for, the extra pay for her would start?
I would like for it to start now. And the additional aspect of that is, we can't pay two people out of one line. So, we have one line that's called the Assistant Chief position. I would ask that we just remain, keep Lindsay in her pay line, her current account line. There's sufficient funds within that account line to pay the difference. So, although she's accepting new responsibilities, we keep her in that account and pay from that account. Then, when Mark retires, she moves to the Assistant Chief account line. And that keeps things clean from the auditor's standpoint.
What do you think, Tom, on that?
Well, that's why we submitted the request to you. The council's responsible for approving positions, so if they're asking for a second Assistant Chief, you guys need to approve that.
But if we... No, if we approve that, then in October, we would have to take it away.
That's what I was going to ask, yes.
So, Mark would be retiring, so that, that budget, essentially, that account line would be, we would no longer pay Mark, and you would continue to pay Lindsay as Assistant Chief.
Right. But if we've added a line, no, we're not adding a line.
We're not. I'm asking that we not add anything. We're asking we not change anything. The only difference being is, the account line that she currently sits in is not titled Assistant Chief.
For two months, yeah, or three.
Right. But it's based specifically on the work that she's doing.
So, when, when Mark, Mark leaves in October, is his time going to be done, or does he have more time to come? Does he have BTO and stuff, or...
We will be paying him out. So, he retires October third and gets paid out. And I apologize, I don't remember the next payday. But then, as soon as that's paid out, then we move Lindsay into that line.
Okay. And then, is there somebody moving into her line then?
Please, Lord, let there be.
Okay.
We're not having any luck yet.
That's what, okay.
So, we've got the one position that's been vacant since May.
But so, you're, but what I mean is, you're planning on this next year, when we do our budgets, her, her line item will still be there for next year?
Correct.
But it won't have the extra pay in it?
No, it won't.
No, no. If there's somebody hired.
Correct.
Okay. Further questions?
As long as, I mean, we're setting a precedence about paying more for her position. I would think it would need to be well documented what's going on, because we don't want a pay increase for that position only.
Right.
And that's kind of what's happening. So, provided we could do that, it satisfies that, I would agree with it.
And at the end of the year, you think there's still going to be money left in these two positions?
Yes, and I apologize, I didn't calculate what it was.
That's right.
But yes, there'll be some being returned. Because, once again, I'm not asking for any additionals. It's just based on the pay difference, so.
How long has she been doing those additional tasks?
Since May. In essence, we started little by little. She's picked up things, but now, she's just, in essence, been given, you know, sink or swim time. Here we go, so.
And the additional pay would only be from now forward?
Unless you would be so kind as to backdate it. I didn't go before the judges with this request, I believe, two weeks ago. So, I would say I can't go before then. So, I wouldn't be opposed to the concept of after, since the judges have approved it, paying that. But that's your decision from that. At the very least, I ask that we start effective this pay period.
The reason this was stopped in our office was, I mean, this happens all the time. Anytime somebody quits and, or turns in their notice, you know, we're hiring immediately. And somebody, if it's from inside, somebody's already taking on those responsibilities. And we have not historically approved pay raises until the position has actually started. No, no offense, but that's, that's why it was stopped in our office. So, because that sets a precedence, because this happens all the time in all of the offices. So, that's, that was our hesitation.
And our difference from that standpoint is, I, when I took over chief position, I was in that exact situation. I served as chief for two months before I actually got the pay for it, from that standpoint. But in this situation, we now have this vacancy, and so, because of that, it's added this additional grief to us and that additional change that we've had to overcome. So, that's where I'm asking, from, from that standpoint. Because originally, back in April, that wasn't the plan. The plan was to pay. But because of these changes, hence where we're at.
Well, I appreciate it, you not paying her before you come to the council, because we need to be the ones that make the change. If we're not going to set any, and I understand you want to have a seamless transition and move everybody forward. I mean, I don't have a problem starting her next pay, but it needs to be documented that this is a special reason, because we do not want to open Pandora's box on this thing. And, and Mark does have a lot of knowledge and can help, help out, and I'm glad, and tell him that I appreciate that he's helping out and staying around. So, I'll make a motion that we go forward with it, with a notation that this is a special occasion to pay next, starting next pay.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we accept the request that the, that Lindsay be paid twenty-four hundred, or that we move twenty-four hundred dollars so that there can be extra pay for Lindsay for the next two and a half months. Yeah. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the same. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Anybody in the audience, any funded organizations that would like to say anything at this time? Department heads? Elected, oh, here we have one. Yeah, we have one.
Mark Bonwell, Building Administrator. Just a quick update on the courthouse in Benford Street. Courthouse phase two on the interior is progressing. We're roughed in and getting ready for drywall and other finishes. So, that's moving on the interior. Exterior, we are still working on the cornice work on the north and south side of the building. As you can remember, the overhangs had a little sway to them, so we're working on that framing and masonry. And so, that's moving. We have slowed down on roofing the courthouse back because we're waiting on that cornice repair. So, once that gets repaired and completed, then they'll roof the rest of the courthouse. So, we're in good shape there. We will be covering up that green ice shield, so anyway. The masonry restoration is still ongoing. You see a lot of changes on the tower itself with the flashing has been restored and painted, and the masonry is being worked on, on the northwest corner. So, big changes on the exterior that you'll be seeing. You can't quite see it because of scaffolding, but it's starting to look really good up there. And then, Benford Street, we're close to completion on that. Still waiting on some railings for the rear and the front. Again, this is an ADA improvement over there. We have roofed the two porches, and we're getting ready to put new gutters on the building. So, we should, we should see completion in, here in the next week or so, actually.
Thanks, Mark.
No problem.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to remind all of our elected officials, there was...
Just wanted to remind all of our elected officials, there was some new legislation that took effect July the 1st on campaign finance. So we tried to send out some emails. Hopefully, most of you got those. But, uh, check your email. If you have any questions about what your obligations are, reach out to the clerk's office.
Couple of updates, um.
Um, I just wanted to let you guys know, I'll, I'll probably come back to you next month for an additional appropriation. Um, we did get the jail roof, um, bid out. Um, it's due, um, here in, I think, three weeks, um, the commissioners. The July 23rd meeting, I think. Um, so, I just want to let you guys know that, that is in progress. It's, it's moving forward, so I'll, I'll certainly- Yep, this is due the remaining portion, um, and then it, it will all be done then.
I love a heads up that we gotta spend money. It's great. Tom?
Just an update on the New Core Road waterline project. As you know, the council helped fund the extension of the waterline for the New Core Towers and Coatings projects. That project is proceeding, and the most recent update is that by the end of the month, the waterline should be operational. This week is the goal, to actually complete the installation, then there'll be a few weeks of testing. So, we'll know in a few days if that is still on schedule, but end of the month is the goal for that. And then also, the New Core Overpass project, we are at the next stage where we'll be having a public, uh, meeting for the project here in August or September, so look forward to that. That product, as you recall, was awarded from the state, about $17 million in grant. And the project is scheduled for next July. So we're moving forward on the next steps to get all of our permitting and approvals through the state for that project.
Anybody else?
Tom, did, did they say who, that was awarded to? Had, do you know the contractor that received it?
For the waterline project, or for the-
No, for the New Core Road, or we just, we just got the receiving of the money. They've not bid it out yet.
Right, yeah, so we received the grant. We will not award the project or actually, uh, release the bid, um, for notice or, notice to bidders, uh, next year.
Brett, do you have anything for the good of the cause?
Yes. Um, first of all, um, Helen would be so proud of you. She was the last woman to run, uh, a meeting, and Helen McGoy was president, so congratulations.
Was that back in '08 too, or when was that?
Well, it's been a while, but, uh, she, she would be proud, she would be proud of the way you did today, so.
Thank you, thank you much.
Uh, I do have, uh, I spoke with, uh, Representative Jeff Thompson, and he will attend our next meeting, Tuesday, August the 12th, at nine. Um, and he wants to be on the agenda for, to talk over the Senate Bill One. And I'm looking for it to be a positive Q and A. So, let's, uh, that's kind of what I told him. We would, it would be a positive question and answer. So if there's anybody that you think that might want to come or be here, uh, he's, uh, been, been very willing to come and talk with us. So, uh, he'll be here on, on, that's the 12th, right, is our next meeting, correct? Okay, so if you'd put him on there, I'd appreciate it very much.
Do you want any questions submitted beforehand that you can feed him?
I can, I've got his, uh, email address, if there's anything that anybody wants to, you know, send me, and I can forward to Jeff. And, and, uh, he just was too busy to come today, which with us missing a couple of people, I think it's good. And this will give people time to, uh, to think about it, so. But yeah, he was very receptive and, uh, and, and is looking forward to being here.
Great. Thanks for arranging that. Oh, wait. Would you like to tell them what you have knew in your life?
Yep, so my daughter gave birth to her first grandchild two, almost two weeks ago. So, LPLBs.
Proud to grandpa? No grandpa? Um, I would like to remind everybody that this week starts the Montgomery County 4-H Fair, and it runs from Friday until Wednesday. Is that the 16th, I think? Okay, so get your lamb burgers, get your pork burgers, get your ribeye sandwich, and appreciate all the work that the 4-Hers have put in. Two people.
Um, just a couple of quick updates. The Assessor did pass values to us for all real and personal property, so we're working on certifying those. Um, budgets were due last week. Anybody who hasn't submitted, uh, um, and for the council, abatements are coming very quickly. We have several that will be on the next agenda.
And one last reminder, the budget presentations by department heads, the time has changed. So, it is the, um, August 25th and 26th, it'll be at 4:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM.
It's, it starts at four. Anything else for the good of the cause? Is there a motion to adjourn? What, what, oh yeah, we gotta give our attorney some money, don't we? I'm sorry. Yeah, public comment. And do, who wants to talk? Sure.
Tom Melvin, lifelong Montgomery County citizen. Um, I understand for the need for more money all the time. As a private citizen, I have to decide on priorities in my life, uh, for my family, uh, my own. Um, it's awful easy to say, do we approve this budget? We approve this, uh, increase appropriations? Um, I'd like to remind you guys that you're, you're elected officials. We rely upon you to betterment of the county and, you know, those here in the city, the city. I, I've looked at the census for the last, uh, since 1990, Montgomery County, '90 was $34,436. 2000 was $37,629, and '10 was $38,124, and in '20 was $37,936. We have not gone up. I mean, that's a 3,000 difference. I mean, up and down, up and down. To get this, these monies that we need for the highway department, for the county, the sheriff's department, and other things, you know, we rely upon you guys to increase the funds. And a part of the funds is increasing the community. Don't get me wrong, I love living in the rural community. I, I live in the country, I love it. I wouldn't live in the city if you paid me. But we need to rely, you know, we need to increase our tax base. Not just say, okay, you know, we're gonna rely upon the citizens of the county to pay for this without increasing our tax base. I mean, we're, we're raising taxes. I mean, when was the last time we reduced the tax rate? I think we all, all ought to take a look at that. I mean, I'm, I'm frustrated. Every, every time I turn around, my bills are higher. My pay goes up a little bit, but everything else goes higher. Um, all right, I'm gonna, the, I know the, uh, wheel tax is on the, uh, for the highway department. I work a four-on-four-off shift, which, I'm, it's not a Monday-through-Friday job. I work weekends, I work holidays, and the snow plowing on the weekends. I mean, weekdays, I could hear a snow plow go by at 5:30 in the morning. On weekends, it's 7:38 o'clock. I have to be at work at seven, by seven. So, you know, that's one of the things we're, we're gonna have to look at. I need, I know New Core does four-on-four-off, other places in the county, besides where I work, does four-on-four-off. It's not just a Monday-through-Friday job anymore. So, we need to take a look at that. I mean, I realize these, you know, the guys on the trucks, you know, work hard. And, but, you know, I need to get to work too, to keep my job, for starters, and, uh, help pay these taxes that you're wanting. Uh, all right, next thing. Um, the assistant chief deputy in training, that raise is gonna come when she, uh, has the job full-time. You know, there's really no appropriations need to do this. All we're doing, I mean, somebody made a comment, opening Pandora's box, a precedent, you know, for future jobs in training. I mean, there's no money appropriated for that, but that happens every single day. So, I'd just like to say, I'm, like I say, I'm disappointed, um, in the council. I'm disappointed in the commissioners. I'm disappointed in the state, federal, everybody. It's, it's awful doggone easy to say, we're gonna raise the taxes on the people that's got the jobs. I mean, you own a business, you own, you know, you have to decide what, how much you're gonna give the raise to folks. You just can't say, okay, let's take a vote. We have to, you know, I mean, everybody here has to make their own budgets. You can't just, well, let's, let's vote to increase this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for sharing your concerns, and I think that really, most of us do share the same concerns because of what we've been handed to do based on what the state voted to do this year. And so, we appreciate you coming forward and, and sharing your feelings, because it is important to us, and thank you. Are there any other comments, then? All right, we have, um, the need to approve these claims. We have $2,474.50 to, um, Taylor and Minette, and then $2,069.42 to Peters and Franklin, or Peters Franklin. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the claims. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same sign. All right, notice that the next regular meeting is August the 12th at nine. And on the 25th and 26th, we will have the budget presentations, and we will begin at four. Is there a motion to adjourn? I need a second. It's seconded, it's-